To conduct this meeting wholly electronically and to officiate, effectuate both the emergency procedures authorized by FOIA and the emergency ordinance, this Library Board of Trustees needs to make certain findings and determinations for the record. First, because each member of this Library Board of Trustees is participating in this meeting from a separate location, we must verify that a quorum of members is participating and that each member's voice is clear, audible, and at an appropriate volume for all the other members. Accordingly, I'm going to conduct a roll call and ask each Library Board member participating in this meeting to state your name and the location from which you are participating. I ask that each of you pay close attention to ensure that you can hear each of your colleagues. Following this roll call, we will vote to establish that every member can hear every other member. Keith Fox from Lee District will be absent for personal reasons. Sheila Janega, Hunter Mill District, absent for medical reason. And Jane Miscavige, a large trustee, will be absent for personal reason. And Mason District, Fran Milhauser, from my home. And now I will call on Braddock, Representative.
There, Braddock District, at my home in Burke.
Providence Trustee. We'll come back to Sue. City of Fairfax.
I'm Suzanne Levy and I'm participating from my home in the city of Fairfax.
Drainsville.
Hi, Sujatha, I'm participating from my home in Great Falls.
Mount Vernon.
Gary Russell, I'm participating from my home in historic dynamic Mount Vernon.
The school board.
Bill Dando, at home in Woodbridge.
Sully District.
Liz Walker, I'm participating from my home in Centerville.
Springfield District. And once again, Providence District. So they're not here. At this point, I will pass the virtual gavel to the vice chair so that I may be heard to make the requisite motion. Brian? I move that each member's voice may be adequately heard by each other member of this Library Board of Trustees.
May I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Suzanne. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Well, the motion verifying audibility of members' voices is approved.
Thank you. Second, having established that each member's voice may be heard by every other member, we must next establish the nature of the emergency that compels these emergency procedures. The fact that we are meeting electronically, what type of electronic communication is being used and how we have arranged for public access to this meeting. Therefore, I move that the state of emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic makes it unsafe for this board to physically assemble and unsafe for the public to physically attend any such meeting. And that as such, FOIA's usual procedures, which require the physical assembly of this board and the physical presence of the public cannot be implemented safely or practically. I further move that this board may conduct this meeting electronically through a dedicated Zoom meeting and that the public may be access, may access this meeting by the the link that's on our website.
Have a second for that motion?
Second.
Suzanne also seconded it. Any discussion? No, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Any abstentions? It is still moved.
Finally, it is next required that all of the matters addressed on today's agenda must address the emergency itself, are necessary for continuity in Fairfax County government, and/or are statutorily required or necessary to continue operations and the discharge of this board's lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. It is so moved. Okay, we're all set.
You may have your gavel back.
Thank you. Um, are Sue Park here yet, or or Phil? We made it in yet, not yet, okay. We'll go on. Okay, the next, the first item is public comment. As far as I know, we do not have any speakers, is that correct? Okay, but let me read the, "The Library Board wishes to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on library-related issues. It is our policy to hear a maximum of 10 speakers at each regularly scheduled board meter, meeting. Speakers are limited to one public comment during a six-month period. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes for their comments. A 30-second warning will be given before each speaker's time is up and the speaker will be expected to end promptly when time is called. Speakers are requested to preregister with the library director. However, if there are available public comment slots open at the time of a board meeting, the remaining slots may be filled by individuals registering at the meeting. Board members appreciate the effort required to make such a presentation and will listen, but not question or respond to speakers. Tonight, there are no registered speakers. If anyone wishes to speak at a future meeting, please call the director's assistant at 703-324-8324." Thank you. Okay, um, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Priscilla, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sujatha. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Okay, those in favor of accepting the minutes as they're written, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say no. Any abstain? Okay, the minutes have been accepted, thank you.
Fran, Sue Park is on.
Okay, great. Sue, do you want to tell us where you're? Should we do that now, I guess? Make sure that, yeah, Sue, if you will, just say where you're calling from so that we know that you can be heard by other, the other trustees.
Sure, I am calling from home.
Okay, great, thank you.
I was trying to log on in a laptop, but it wasn't working, so I'm on my phone now.
Okay, welcome to the meeting, glad that you made it. And I think, can everyone here, Sue?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. And has Phil, has Phil come in yet? No, okay.
I don't see Phil.
Okay. The next item is the chair report. And just a couple of things before I go on with what is on the actual agenda, but we anticipate a new business item for discussion of issues that have arisen lately over library collections. At probably at our next meeting. So those of you who, you know, there have been some issues being raised about books in the library collection. And we intend to put that as a new business item at our next meeting. The next thing, and it's kind of related to that and to our action item later on in the meet, in the meeting, is the the importance of the work that, that we trustees do and the role that we play. And in our policies, we solidify what the library stands for and how we operate. And the trustees serve as a buffer between the members of the public and the staff. That the trustees create the policies, staff implements them every day in their work. And if there are issues that the public raises, they come to us as trustees. And we support the staff in that. And that's the importance of the work on things like the bylaws and policies, which can seem like really nitty-gritty and in the weeds. But until you, oh, I see Phil is here, so I'll interrupt and ask Phil if he will just say where he's, where he's participating from in the meeting. So if you'll unmute yourself and just let us know so we can know that we can hear you and you can hear us.
You hear me, Fran, Phil? Well, I'm the only one that's in attendance in this meeting. I'm at the library. I thought that's where we were supposed to.
Oh.
I apologize that one young lady helped me get in, so I'm sitting in the conference room. So the rest of you are all absent, so.
So you're at George Mason Library?
I'm at the library, because that's
George, okay. Okay, and everyone can hear Phil and see him and, okay, we're all here. Everyone who should be here is here. That's good. Thank you, Phil. Okay, so I will go on. What should I say? Oh, that sometimes it can feel like it's not that big a deal when we work on policies. But I think after you've been on the board for a while and you see the discussions that we have and the editing and the tweaking that we do, it is really important. And then when an issue comes up, we have the policies that are the framework, sort of the backbone of what the library is all about. So when we come to the action item, I'll probably say something like this again, but you know, as we're facing issues arising over our different, our collection and the books in our collection becomes even more important that we understand what our policies are and what we're all about. So now, onto something more fun. The Staff Excellence Committee will be Sheila Janega and myself. I have watched this committee and I thought I would like to do that, so it was my, I just took advantage of that opportunity to appoint myself. So for those, just to reiterate what this award is, patrons or library users nominate a staff member during the first two weeks in February. And then the committee then reviews all of them and whittles them down. Now, last time we had almost 100 nominations and we awarded, I think it was 11, who were awarded at the March meeting. And it's, it's really wonderful to see how much, you know, our users appreciate the things that the people, people on the lot, front lines do for them. And sometimes people in the, in the background, because we had people who are in charge of responding when there are, oh, I don't know, breakdowns and floods and things like that. So that was great. Then the other committee that will be forming will be the Strategic Planning Committee. And Brian has agreed to chair that, yay. And the members of that committee will be Suzanne Levy, Sue Park, Priscilla Dando, and Sujatha Hampton. So that will get started in January. The, the call has already gone out for staff members to serve on the staff committee for that. So Jessica's, we're taking care of that. And then she'll be meeting with Brian to just go over what, what all is, is engaged. And if you want to see, if you want to take a look at what's in place now, the strategic plan ran, run, has run from 2018 and it will end in 2022. So that's why we're forming the committee now to come up with a new, and I think it is also a five-year plan, if that's correct, usually doing five-year increments. But you can take a look at the current one in the library side. If you go to, well, there are a couple of ways you can get to it. And one is like from home and then FC, FCPL curated content. And then I think next, strategic planning, Jessica also mentioned another way that you can get to that and see what's in place right now.
Yeah, if you go to research.fairfaxcounty.gov and search for the strategic plan, it'll come up as well.
So that will be exciting. And next, uh, next on the agenda, the committee reports. And the first one on there is the Outreach Committee. And that has been postponed to January 11th. That, yes, there will be a virtual committee meeting. So you can, if you want to attend, you can certainly can do that.
I have a question regarding that. I, I thought I had seen a draft, perhaps it wasn't a draft, of the winter talking point. But it's not in the package today. Is that because the Outreach Committee hasn't met yet? Okay. Did you mail, email out that to everybody so that we're at least prepared for anything at the beginning of January?
So the, the talking points are approved by the Outreach Committee? And because the Outreach Committee hasn't met yet, they haven't been distributed.
Okay, okay, great, thanks.
Yes, could you have somebody on that meeting? I'm going to be out of town and I don't have access by library mail. So if they could send me connection to my regular email, I'd be happy to participate, so.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. And Foundation, Liz Walker, if you have anything that you would like to share or not, okay.
Um, I just wanted to share that during that Giving Tuesday, the Foundation did post on for people to purchase books for the library and 80 books were purchased. And they're very pleased with that. In addition to that, people made donations. And so they feel that that was a very successful event. They're going to be, um, I believe it was, and I don't have my report in front of me, I apologize for that. I think it was January the 15th, there is the deadline for scholarships. I can get confirmation of that before the meetings go, the minutes go out, if that's acceptable. But the upcoming scholarships, there's a deadline on January the 15th, but I do not have my notes in front of me, so I don't know exactly who would be eligible for those scholarships as well, so I apologize. I don't know what happened to my notes on that. I was at the doctor this afternoon and did some errands and I came in home a little bit late, so many apologies.
Well, that, the, this, this group round is, will be the undergraduate scholarship application. Yeah, so, and I know in the past, the publicity has gone out to the schools so that they posted on their websites and students can just click on that and go to the Foundation site to get the application. And then it's also open to Fairfax County employees and volunteers for, who are maybe, or are working on an undergraduate degree. But the main, and the main thing is that you can go to the, the Foundation website and get all the information. And then I noticed in the, in the handout for, for next week's Foundation Board meeting that there's the, I think it's a draft of a new application, so there, that that's looks really streamlined. And so that'll be interesting to hear more about next week. We'll all know more next week.
Our Foundation meeting is next week. And so this was just a little bit, a, a, a cover for the period of time. But I do, um, thank you, Fran, for the best chair, for the Foundation Scholarship Committee. Your information was helpful.
And then, you know, I got a, also, there was a thing about the, the fair, the fair that is Saturday. Is it Saturday and Sunday? And I, I thought I, I printed it out, but I think I took it upstairs, but.
I do have it. Friday, 5 to 8, Saturday, 12 to 6, Sunday, 12 to 5. They'll be at the Old Town Square in the city of Fairfax. It's a special event. They're going to be offering like a gift package for people to purchase. And they're welcoming everybody to come by and stop by to their booth. I think their booth is number two.
Oh, good. And I think that, from my recollection of looking at the map, I think that's right across the street from the, from the libraries. Is that right, Suzanne?
Yes. They are recommending that if you come out and they encourage everybody to come out, park at the, the library.
Yeah.
Which has nice parking.
That's nice. So, um, you know, sort of if, if Foundation staff are braving the weather to staff a booth, I think it would be nice to pop in and support them. We'll be warm and toasty. Yeah, so that should be fun.
72 on Saturday.
Oh, it is? Okay. But not Saturday, Friday night or so, anyway.
Festival, nice day for a festival.
Yeah, it's great. So those are the only committee reports that I know of. Is there anyone else who has anything from a committee? No? Okay, great. And I will turn to the next item on the agenda, which is the Director's Report, so Jessica.
Fran, so you had a couple of items in your packet that I'll be happy to go over briefly. The first is, in anticipation of a hopeful yes vote on your action item today, staff have been gearing up for fine-free marketing. We're anticipating that after your vote tonight, if it is supportive of amending the policy, we'll start releasing marketing materials tomorrow so that it's building some awareness in advance of the fact that we're going fine-free starting January 1st. We've got a couple of great slogans queued up, including the first one, which I think I shared at the last meeting, is "Many Happy Returns," to align with the holiday season. And our branch staff are gearing up for the process of no longer charging overdue fines with most overdue materials. For our central staff, we've been working with the Integrated Library System staff to ensure that this is going to be ready to go. And in fact, it might be a smidge before actually January 1st, since their folks will be on holiday leave that day. But everything is looking good if your, if your vote is supportive and will be ready to spread the good cheer once that goes into effect. I also wanted to give you a brief preview of an initiative that we're kicking off in 2022 called the Year of Literacy. You know, we've, we've been in the middle of this pandemic for what feels like two years now and is in fact almost two years now. And we're hoping to find something to really focus our energies on in the coming year that was right in the library's wheelhouse, gave us a lot of opportunities to connect to programs and materials that we already offer and literously really fit the bill for that. So 2022 is going to be a year where every month we focus on a different type of literacy and the services that we offer around it. So January is going to be traditional literacy, where we highlight some of our ELL programming. We have our Winter Reading Challenge for adults and children. And then it'll transition into different types of literacy, like love literacy in February, where we may be hosting a Blind Date with a Book programs, where books are covered with like paper bags and you just read a description on the outside and you pick it up based on the description. March will be sports literacy. And I am very much looking forward to a March book bracket. I'm not super sports inclined myself, so we're trying to bring books into that. And throughout the whole year, we've got different topics, including culinary literacy, music literacy, political literacy, sports literacy, just all across the board. So even if one type of literacy doesn't fit someone's bill, maybe the rest of them will. And I anticipate, sorry, in January, you'll have some more information about the specific months and some of our marketing materials. You also had in your packet an update on some of our renovations. It's been almost a little over a year now since our last bond was approved. And I wanted to make sure you knew we were where, where we, where we were with all those renovations. The next one that we are likely to attend a ribbon-cutting for is Lorton, which is on track and on progress. Well, I know I'm very excited for reopening in late spring, early summer, wouldn't have an exact date yet of 2022, but that one will definitely be next calendar year. In addition to the items that you have in your packet, I had two other things to share. The first is that the county approved its legislative program at yesterday's board supervisor's meeting. And in both the state and the federal platform, there was language supportive of libraries and decreasing ebook costs. So the, the actual language is something around reducing barriers to acquisition of e-materials for libraries. But the intent from your e-material review committee is to look at how to get more sustainable, accessible costs and terms for e-materials. So that was a great win that it's in both the state and the federal platform. And we look forward to seeing where that might go. The other update, you've heard me wax poetic over different meetings about the indie author programs that we've hosted. And I'm thrilled to share that Virginia's Indie Author of the Year actually came through FCPL. Her name is Loriann Bailey and she wrote a book called "To Have a Highland Thief." It's a romance book, if you didn't pick it up from the title. So we're tickled that the Virginia author came through our library system and we're wishing her best wishes as she gears up to maybe be the Indie Author of the Year, not just for Virginia. Those are all my notes, Fran?
Okay, great, very, very nice. And now we move on to the next item, which is the action item. And so in your packet, you have the existing policy. And then you have the recommended updated policy. And this is what incorporates the no fine policy. So do we have a motion to accept the updated policy on safeguarding library materials?
I move.
Priscilla, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a discussion? And I guess put your hand up and Brian and I will try to make sure, well, we will make sure that everyone who wants to speak gets the opportunity to speak once. And just a reminder that in strictly speaking in Robert's rules, you can speak once. And then if you want to speak again, you have to have a different point of view. So that doesn't make sense, but anyway, so if you want to speak, get your thoughts together and now put your hand up and we will call on you. And I think Liz, did you have your hand up? Did Ari already see that? Yes, Liz?
Yes, I have, I think, three items to go over on my one discussion. And I was wondering, the first point said fines. And we talk about a lot about transparency and, and open communication. But I was wondering, we haven't spelled out what it said except in the first line, except for categories determined. No fines shall be assessed for overdue materials except for categories determined by the library director. And there were two examples there, but I'm wondering, are there more things that could make somebody receive a fine that we should spell out or why we didn't spell it out more specifically? So that people aren't blindsided.
Okay, so I'll answer that, but that doesn't mean that you then don't get to ask your other questions, okay? But that way, yeah, okay. So, um, in, it's sort of like the Constitution that you don't want to specify every little thing. Because then some, yeah, then someone could say, well, but that's not being specified. And so there's the blanket that determined by the library director. And, you know, that person, and if you think of some of the, it's, it's also difficult to predict what's going to be in a special collection. Like we had the, the nets and, you know, for exploring pond life. And then we had the little ba, the nature backpacks. We had radon detectors, we have Chromebooks. So, you know, it's good to leave it open. You know, as the library just becomes so diversified in terms of, we're not just about books anymore.
Right. But is there another major category or categories that were, that would be, that we should cover or include so that it's not something that somebody will be totally surprised at? That's what I'm, I'm trying to get at. I understood the, the not being specific, but I'm just wondering, are there, we have two items, two categories there. Is there some others that we should be listing out as well that is not so specific, you know?
Fran, I'm, I'm happy to jump in real quick if you'd like.
Great.
Yeah. So in order to provide additional transparency, because you're right, Liz, that we want to make sure that people know out the gate what they could be charged a fine for. If you all vote to approve this, we have a public website page that will be updated that will include all of the specific line items for things which people could be charged fines for, like interlibrary loans, like Chromebooks and Wi-Fi, like the American Revolution kits, all those special collections. And I can say that on the staff side, we appreciate the broadness of it because if we add a new collection in the future that's not written into the policy, it's easier to slide it into the website than it is update the policy.
Right.
Do you think that we could add like on onsite, when it talked about, see, I didn't know what special collections, the, the different categories? Maybe some examples, just as per example, like something that would be ongoing for a long period of time that wouldn't have to come off, you know, next year, halfway through the year? Just as again, some examples of what is a special collection?
The, the policy is the boards to amend and update. My, my recommendation is to keep it broad, simply because we don't know how long we will have special collections, if it makes sense to add new ones into there. And including examples specific in your policy may limit things in the future.
No, I meant on the webpage.
Well, Liz, I think of another example, another example that I could think of, like the program at George Mason called Cook the Book, in which people who are going to participate could check out a library book that was the featured cookbook for the next month. And when you checked it out, you got an additional, you got additional time on the checkout period. And then that was just a special thing. And so it, it comes up and, you know, I mean, I don't know how that would be handled with the no fine policy, but rather than make it look as if you had an overdue book, even though there were no fines, I would imagine that the implementation would be, if you're checking out one of these titles, the loan period on it is extended to cover the time between the meeting and the next meeting. So, and I guess the point I'm making with that example is that it's a, it's a varied field and I, in terms of what special collections are. I mean, I know from being a children's librarian, we used to have puzzles. I don't know if they still do, we would check out puzzles and that would be different. And board books and there's a lot. And, and I, I feel like it might be too. that would be different and board books and there's a lot and, and I, I feel like it might be too much to list um, a lot of things and rather to keep the, um, keep the policy straightforward, but I should stop talking and let other trustees speak out as well.
Again, I respect what you're saying. I was just encouraging on the webpage, based on what Jessica was saying, to add some examples. Because a lot of people might not know what a special collection is.
Can do. I think I misunderstood you Liz, my, my apologies.
Any, I, somebody else wanted to say something. Okay, the other thing, uh, the other second item that I wanted to bring up is a number two. Um, and number one, we talked about no fines shall be assessed for overdue materials, except blah, blah, blah. And then in number two, we talk again about, uh, uh, collecting money owed due to overdue materials, damaged or unreturned materials. Is there something other language that we can use possibly for overdue materials? Being repeated again, because basically we're, we're not, for the normal, uh, client will say patron, we're not asking, we're not going to be charging for overdue materials, right? So again, I just didn't want it to be misleading if somebody's picking this up and number one, we say overdue materials, except for some exceptions. And then we're talking again that the amount of money owed due to overdue materials, maybe something like, you know, to broaden it so they don't think, again, we're talking about overdue fines because I didn't bring a book back in. I'm just being sensitive to the word again, being overdue materials. Suzanne wants to say something.
Okay, Suzanne.
Um, Liz, I would say that the examples are there. Um, overdue materials, damaged or unreturned materials or other charges. I think that qualifies it.
And we could say, we could say, except referenced, pardon?
We're talking about blocked accounts here and th- these are the things that could cause your account to be blocked.
Okay, I see that. All right, thank you. And the last one is chairman in the number three. Maybe we could just say chair or chairperson.
Like that.
Just a minor, that's a minor one.
Are you recommending chair or chairperson?
Chair, I like chair.
Uh, yeah, I would defer to the chair.
Say, I, I don't recall. Do the bylaws call the chair a chair or whatever the bylaws say? If it says chairman, then. You gotta use, I don't have the bylaws right in front of me.
I can get my folder.
I'd be fine with just saying, let's change it into whatever the bylaws say the title of the chair could be.
It says chair, it says chair in the bylaws.
Okay.
Yeah, it does, yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
Librarians, we have the sources with us.
So if I may, then, uh, uh, Fran, you have to, uh, Liz should make a motion. Now that the motion is made to approve this, another motion to change the wording from chairman to chair in paragraph three. That has to be seconded and approved and then we can act on the main motion.
Okay, Liz.
I just, could I just say that I, uh, have a motion to modify the word chairman, chairman in number three to chair and otherwise, um, uh.
That's all you need to say.
That's it, and I second it.
Okay, any discussion on that? Issue? Okay, all those in favor of the revised language, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Anyone abstaining, say nothing, no. Sorry.
So now the main motion remains on.
Uh, the na- the main motion is still there, right? Um, and does anyone else have any comments or questions or changes, recommended changes?
I call the question.
Do you get to do that or do I? Anyway, yes, okay. I call the question and let's vote on all those in favor of the, um, of the recommended updated policy. Please say aye. Those opposed, we say no, no, that anyone abstaining. Okay, the motion is fast. Thank you very much. So that's good. Good work, taken care of. Okay, um, and now we're ready for the roundtable. So let's see. I'll get my list because it's not. Okay, so we'll start with, um, Suzanne, would you like to start?
Sure, um, I'd like to wish everybody very happy holidays, happy new year. And we'll look forward to meeting in the new year, either remotely or in person again. Um, I also wanted to say that I shared the, um, annual reports with members of the Fairfax City Council and the, um, the school board and I've gotten several very, very laudatory comments about the annual report, how interesting it was and how much they learned from it. And I also want to say that I've been very pleased that the city has been really good about, um, touting things going on in the library from the, um, from the, uh, COVID kits to new policies and, uh, I don't know if all of you know, there's a bit of a project going on at Fairfax City, um, having to do with the parking garage and fixing some leaks. And, um, that if, if you're coming to the library from Fairfax Circle via Ole Highway, you can't come in the ramp there. You've got to go around the corner and come in from University Drive. And that's supposed to be through December twenty-second. So it seems to be, every, every time I go to the parking garage, there's fewer parking spaces. It seems like there's a lot of equipment there. So if you're going to the, um, the fair on Saturday, I would recommend parking in the upper level because when I was there Sunday afternoon, the, the market was going on in Old Town Square and it was very crowded on the lower level, but the upper level was half empty, so. Just a hint. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, how about Gary? Anything? Okay, thank you. Uh, Priscilla.
You say Phil, Fran?
I said Priscilla.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
That's, um, no, thank you. I can, I'll pass tonight.
Okay, Phil.
Just like Suzette, I'd like to wish you all very, very happy holiday.
Thank you, Phil. Um, Liz?
Nothing other than a happy holidays.
Okay, great. Su- Sujatha.
We also would like to wish everybody a happy holiday and if there are any teachers that are listening or librarians that are listening, I want you to know that, you know, all your inbox comments and things that you send me and like, I, 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 I know that these are really trying times and, um, uh, we have your back. So, you know, I'm sorry for, for all of that that you're going through and I wish everybody a happy holiday and hopefully you get a lot of rest over this holiday.
Thank you, and that leaves Brian.
I'd like to thank you Fran for the appointment to be, uh, chair of the strategic planning committee. Uh, I will be doing some homework, as will, I hope, all the others, but I look forward to, uh, working on this. I, I honestly don't see any major changes unless the Fairfax County made major changes and I don't think they did. They added some metrics that we'll look at. Uh, other than that, uh, Burke Center has a winter holiday sale on Friday and Saturday of this week and, uh, have a great holiday. Bye.
Thank you. And you reminded me, I'd like to thank everyone who accepted, um, appointments to the different committees. Um, thank you very much. Um, that's very important work that has to be done. And I want to let you know that, um, a new, um, directory of the trustees with contact information and committee assignments will be coming out, um, after this meeting. So it's, it's ready to, it's ready to come out. Um, and I think that's, that's it. If, uh, wait Suzanne, did you have something? You're muted.
You, you left Sue off.
You left Sue off.
Oh, 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 thank you. Sue, sorry.
Oh, uh, no problem. Um, don't have anything to add except happy holidays to everyone.
Okay, thank you and so, so sorry. Uh, and, um, I think that's it. If we have a motion to adjourn.
Fran, can I ask Jessica just one, Jessica, I didn't get the info you were going to send me.
I sent it at about six fifty.
Uh, okay, that's why I didn't see it. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Oh, and you know, and I, and that reminds me that I, if you, if you go to the, like, I get the county, um, you know, the Jeff McKay newsletter about the meeting. I don't know if everybody else gets that, but the legislative committee report is there. And if you click on the link and I think it's page fourteen where the library, uh, the paragraph about the library is. So you can, um, you can also find it that way as well, because that's, that's why I printed, I was very excited when I saw that it happened. Yes, Liz?
You know, uh, how we could get the Jeff McKay's newsletter?
I, I'll be happy to cover that. So most of our board supervisor members have newsletters that you can sign up for on the county websites. Uh, I believe Chair McKay's you can sign up for on the county website as well.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
Um, Jessica, are we, because these are in the county legislative plan, are we allowed to speak to our delegates and senators about it or point it out to them?
Oh, that's a good question.
Sure. So the language that's in the county's legislative program is very brief. It's a sentence or two that talks about reducing barriers to access for e-materials, costs for libraries. Um, so you are welcome to talk to legislators around that specific point because it's in the adopted program. The county did not look at moving forward legislation itself on this topic this year, so we're not looking to find a sponsor and move it forward. But if someone else in the Commonwealth was able to move something forward, it appears that the county would be supportive of it. So if you know legislatures, legislative members, um, in the House or, or anywhere else, you're welcome to tell them um, that the county is very supportive of looking at ways to decrease barriers. And that can include costs, terms, conditions, things like that, but they're not looking at actually moving forward a, a specific item right now.
Thank you.
Jessica, can I ask you another question also?
Sure, just fine.
Would you send us the, uh, you, you told us where to find the link to the strategic.
Yep, I will send that around tomorrow morning.
Um, and I just missed it. I missed when you said that.
You got it. I will send around both the legislative plat- program and the strategic planning link, uh, tomorrow morning.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right. Anybody else? Um, okay, I think now we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Bill, thank you. Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, wow. Well, let's just stay. Thank you Suzanne, all those in favor, please, please say aye.
Happy holiday.
Okay, thank you. The meeting is adjourned.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Happy holidays, thank you.
Forty-five minutes.